Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, July 27, 2022. It's 6:00 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. It's continued from the July 27 meeting, which was abruptly adjourned near the end because of our local power outage. And up to July 20, thank you, power outage. I'll ask Ms. Candell, would you give us a roll call, please?
Mayor Peak?
Here.
Mayor Potem Emilio?
Here.
Council members Coletti?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Paduri?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Councilmember Tomlinson, I believe, is absent today.
Hey, just for clarity, where we left off was we heard item 12A, cannabis advisory ballot measure and cannabis tax ballot measure. And so we were continuing on with 12B as in void, Pacific Grove City Charter Amendment to change the number of city council members from six to four. And we have three other items after that, 12C, and then the former item 6A, which is travel and meeting reimbursements, and then item 13B, which is amended authorized position allocation. So with that, let's begin with item 12B, the charter amendment. Mr. Pyrick?
Yes, I'll be glad to present that item. Are you hearing me okay, Mayor?
Yes, if you could speak maybe a little bit louder.
I'd be glad to do that. So this item this evening, I did start to present it during the power outage. So I don't know how much of it anybody heard. So I'm going to start over. This is an item to consider a resolution, which would place a ballot measure on the ballot in November, which would amend the Pacific Grove City Charter to change the number of city council members from six to four. And the further recommended actions are set forth in your agenda packet. If the approval is, if the ballot measure is approved by the voters, reducing the number from six to four, there's some what I would call corollary changes that would be necessary to the charter to reflect the fact that you no longer have six council members, but you have four. These are all in your packet. And I should mention that we did consider this item at your meeting on July 6. However, at that time, the number of words that were in the measure exceeded the limitation of 75, something that was called to my attention by Councilmember Coletti. And so as a result of that, we went back and made modifications to the measure language, which consisted of changing the words council members from two words to one word. And that is an acceptable use of the English language to have council members as a single word. So once those changes were made, then we came back within the 75-word limit under the law for this amendment. So as I was mentioning a moment ago, the changes, there are some corollary changes that would be necessary to the charter to reflect the fact that you would have four council members instead of six. I went through those in detail on July 6. Also, it's in your agenda packet. So I'll just briefly cover those. And Article 6 would change from six to four members. There would also be a change in Article 11. And again, this is in your agenda packet. In the last paragraph there in the packet, it shows that the remaining council members, if there's a vacancy in the office of mayor, would change from four to three votes. Article 12 talks about how many council members are elected at each municipal election. That would be reduced from three to two. Article 13, where there's reference to the city council cancelling a meeting, that would be reduced from five to four. On ordinances to be passed, the affirmative vote of three members shall be necessary to adopt. Then, let's see, other changes here. Also, on an urgency ordinance, it could be four votes instead of five. That's also an Article 15. Article 19, for the city manager is to be appointed by a four fifths vote instead of five sevenths to attend all meetings unless excused. That's also in Article 19. For the city manager, the excuse, those that would be required to excuse would be two instead of three. Article 24 relates to the city attorney. Again, the question of being excused from a meeting is reduced from three to two. Article 26, there's two places there where the numbers of council members are reduced from four to three. Article 40, the number of council members there for contracts on public work is reduced from five to four. And let me see if there's any other. That is it. So as I say, those are all what I call corollary changes that are driven by the fact that you would have four council members instead of six. And then you would still have the mayor, of course. So if with this charter amendment, you would follow the pattern in many cities and states which of your size, which have four council members and a mayor, either an elected mayor or a mayor that's been appointed by the city council. So the recommended action tonight is in the, is in your agenda packet. It's to adopt the resolution. And then the other action items are listed there as well. So I'm available to answer questions if they're.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We have one online, Mayor.
Welcome.
Inga Lawrence Endymer.
Mayor, city council, city attorney. It's high time to streamline the city council as well as all the other things that the city council has streamlined. And in this, it would align us with probably impending district elections. It would align us with other cities, like 90% in California. And it would certainly, I believe with my whole heart, that we will have just as much diversity and just as many opinions with with five members up there, I mean, including the mayor, as with seven. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No further hands, Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment. Council discussion, Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a question for the city attorney as far as the recommended action. We are going to also rescind the previous resolution. Is that not right? Resolution 22034?
Yes, you will. And that is in the resolution that you're adopting.
Okay. And then, so we've, in our July 20 agenda report, we've got a recommendation, and I believe we're going to include rescinding that resolution and then also including within the resolution we'll be voting on, the provisions that are included in the addendum or the errata for July 20 meeting. And with that said, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move the recommended action as provided in the agenda report, July 20, 2022, and also to rescind resolution 22034 and to include within and include within the, the motion, the inclusion of the errata for the resolution that we will be adopting this evening.
I'm happy to second that.
Discussion on the motion?
Could I ask, then, does that also include the other recommended actions in the, in the agenda? Does your motion include the others?
The four listed? Yes, includes all recommended actions plus the additional two I mentioned.
Maybe we have a vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Coletti?
Hi.
Councilmember McAdams?
Hi.
Mayor Peak?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Emilio?
No.
Councilmember Paduri?
No.
Mayor?
Hi.
Motion carries 420. Councilmember Tomlinson absent.
I'm sorry, did you say?
We're on to item 12.
Mayor, can I, perhaps I didn't hear it right. What did, what did the clerk announce as the vote?
42, sorry, 421. Councilmember Tomlinson absent.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving on to item 12C, contract amendment with Access Media Productions. Mr. Kasimi, welcome.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. The city staff received a revised pricing proposal from Access Media Production, or AMP, for production and broadcast of the city's council meetings. Last year, AMP provided three-tiered pricing options in their proposal. And the difference between the tier, the three tiers briefly were as follows. The tier one was at $25,000 annually, but it did not include the live broadcast or the replays of the city council meetings on the peninsula channel. The tier two was at $40,000 annually, but did not include the replays of the city council meetings on the peninsula channel. The tier three, however, was at $52,000 annually and included both. City staff decided to go with the tier two option primarily for these two reasons. First, the tier two option saved the city about $12,000 annually. And the tier three option, along with the equipment and maintenance and support expenses, would have drawn down our PEG funds balance, which is a state franchise PEG funds, eventually not leaving enough funds available in our PEG funds to pay for maintenance, repairs, and upgrades of the AV equipment, audiovisual equipment in the council chambers. The public is able to view on-demand replays of the meetings conveniently through the city's website. This year, this year's revised proposal from AMP includes two pricing options. First, the would be in line with the current pricing plan, which has now increased from $39,000, that was there last year, to $42,900. And the second option is premium plan, which has, which was tier three last year, and it, which is still at $52,000 annually. Staff recommends the council to approve the amendment of the contract with AMP with the current plan or the premium plan options from their new proposal or provide staff with an alternate direction. Although the state franchise fund has sufficient fund balance to cover this increase, considerations should be given to additional withdrawal or drawdowns that may be needed for equipment, maintenance, support services, and upgrades. I would be happy to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Do we have public comment? Welcome.
And council, I would really like you to bring back the meeting broadcasting. It was done for 20, 25 years, maybe even a little more. And it was included in the 2021, and I believe in the 2021, 22, that the city actually declined it. Although it's available through the website, there are those who just don't have or simply choose not to use the internet. And some do much better with larger screens and convenient time and a higher volume that they can accomplish by the television. The presentation of the current plan does not include the AMP TV broadcasting and does not provide the live stream on internet such as Facebook or YouTube. So having those two additional services would provide more viewing options for the agenda goal of alignment, transparency, accountability, and communications for our community, and would cover all ages and abilities. The agenda report states that there would need to be a budget amendment to cover the premium plan. However, the approved 22, 2022 and 23 budget anticipates receiving PEG funds amounting to $59,000 with a planned allocation for $53,000 for AV purposes. That would leave approximately $8,000 overage that could be added to the current fund balance, which is $79,000 to cover unexpected support needs and upgrades. So for that reason, I urge you to choose the premium plan. Thank you.
We have one caller online, Mayor. Inga Lawrence Endymer.
I applaud Sally Moore's presentation there. And I would certainly vote for the premium plan, too. In the spirit of diversity, inclusion, equity, it needs to be. Staff decided last time that we didn't need it, and we need it. Thank you very much.
Biani?
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd just like to second or third the previous speakers because I believe that in the interest of transparency and inclusion, it's just imperative that people have access, not just through a computer, that they have access through their TV and can view it at times that they can accommodate and, as was mentioned before, adjust the volume and all of that. So I think it, council really needs to make sure that everybody in the community who wants to can, can attend these meetings. Or at least, yeah, observe them if not participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
And no further hands are raised.
Close public comment. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with the comments because I think we want to go with, I got a little feedback here. With the best option, with the highest option in order to have meetings broadcast for everybody to watch, whatever convenient times. I think my mic is really shot here. Okay.
Yeah, just a reminder, if you have a laptop on and you're hooked up to Zoom, it'll create issues within the chamber unless you're on mute. You should not have your audio.
Well, I don't, I don't have that. But okay, so I think the, I'm tier three at a minimum. And today we have received an email from Kelly Nix about putting this on YouTube. And I'm still hearing that. Okay, I, just because I don't think anyone heard what I was saying. So I, let me go back and say that I'm in favor of having the most robust option tonight. That's tier three, I suppose. But I, I'm actually thinking we need to go beyond that. And, and the Pinecone writer, Kelly Nix, wrote into us and talked about how Carmel has live streaming capabilities on YouTube, I believe it was what I read. And I'd be in favor of not only doing tier three so that all folks can watch when they need to, but also beefing it up even further. And I don't know tonight's resolution or ordinance may not, it looks like we're just choosing one. So I'm choosing the highest option, but I think we need to look more at being more robust about it. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. And I actually asked Mr. Kasimi, I think maybe a month ago, about live streaming to both Facebook and YouTube via Zoom, which is a capability that is included in Zoom, which is, you know, would, again, like what Councilmember Smith is saying, just more access. As far as who can watch AMP, do you have to have cable? Or do they have on-demand services? How, if someone doesn't have cable, like my household, how do I watch AMP?
Councilmember McAdams through the mayor. We, we did have, until last year, about a year and a half, we did have a way to watch it through the website, the live stream through the website. But at this time, we don't have that feature. We are looking, we can look at re-enabling that. But that is a capability that can be enabled.
And that's through AMP?
That is through, yeah, AMP, and the service that the AMP provides for live streaming.
Okay, so in order to watch from home, you have to have a cable. You have to have cable. And in addition to that, whatever cable plan you have has to include local channels. Is that?
No, not necessarily. So there are two ways to watch the live meetings through AMP. And currently, we only have the television and the live Zoom. So you, if you're using Zoom, then you can watch the meeting, participate in the meeting, or you can watch the meeting live on the television. There is another way that was available until about a year ago, which was through the website and live streamed by AMP. And the access was through our website. And we can re-enable that feature.
Okay, but the on, but in the AMP contract, if I want to watch from my home on AMP, like a replay or on their channel, I have to be a cable, I have to have cable. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. All you need is the computer, just like you need a computer to join to the Zoom. Then you would go to the website and you could watch the live stream of the meeting on your computer as well, if you enable that service.
All right. And then in the contract, so does it include, so like, for instance, I think this month, we've almost had a meeting every week. So instead of two meetings this week, the council, or this month, the council is having four. So how is that included in the plan if we go over two meetings a month? Are the extra meetings billed separately, or is it just have as many meetings as you'd like?
Yeah, we kept a little cushion, Councilmember McAdam through me. We kept a little cushion when we did the contract last year, so that we kept six extra meetings. So generally, you know, it's 24 meetings, two meetings per month, but we kept it to up to 30 meetings. So if we reach that limit, any additional meetings after that would be paid, you know, by hourly service to AMP.
Okay, and then? And then just sort of going back to being able to be more accessible on live stream via Facebook and YouTube, what, what does that look like?
That is certainly doable. We haven't had a chance to look further into it. But then that is the capability that is independent of which option we choose here, the current plan or the premium plan. That service is something that we would have to work and scale out, basically.
Right, but that's just through Zoom. Is that correct?
Right. There are a couple of options. We could do it through Zoom, or we could use the live stream service through the current streaming that AMP is sending out. So there are a couple of options. We're going to have to try and see which one works best for our needs.
Okay, I'm, I'm flexible. It doesn't really matter to me what plan it is. But I do think that we need to keep in mind that not everybody has cable. And so in addition to, you know, this $52,000 a year, we should also go and look at avenues for people who don't have cable. And in addition to that, it's my understanding that if you do have cable, you pay extra to have local channels. So I think that this is a really limited audience as far as on the TV. Because I know, like, my family, we don't have cable. We do Hulu and Netflix and on-demand and YouTube. So I think we need to just keep in mind that a lot of people don't have cable. Thanks.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I was very interested in this item. And I spoke with the general manager of AMP, Sarah Pierce. And I have cable. I've got the basic rate, the lowest cost rate. And that does have the local channels, which includes the PEG channel. So it's, it's, you don't have to add that to your bill. I mean, it's, it's, it's the one who pays our franchise fee. So the PEG channels are paid for by the franchise fees. And so I pay the lowest cost I can, and I get the PEG channel. A couple of things, you asked, Councilmember McAdams asked about the meetings. This is all on page 212 and 213 of our agenda packet. The tier three package includes 35 meetings per year. So that's well and above of, you know, what we'd be doing for regular and special meetings. And tier three also includes, this is on the third bullet point, second from the top on page 213. AMP will livestream these meetings to City APG's internet platform of choice. That should also, that should read platforms. According to Sarah Pierce, they can stream to multiple sites, YouTube, Facebook, et cetera. And the nice thing about that option, which is only available in tier three, is that the file that gets created on YouTube, the video on-demand file, it's created right after the meeting. I mean, the meeting ends, boom, the file is created, transcoded, available for viewing on YouTube. So we get that in tier three. The video on-demand files that can appear on AMP's site as well as live stream, you can go to the AMP's website to both livestream council meetings and to view past council meetings via their video on-demand service. Those take a little longer to pop up. But if we do the livestreaming to YouTube, that wouldn't be the case. And I'm a long-term viewer of council meetings on the PEG channel. And I used to always tune in on Sundays to see my favorite, favorite members of the community. And, and that's gone now. And we'd, we'd been doing that for years, decades, as Sally Moore mentioned. So I think all we're doing here tonight is we're restoring a service to our citizens who are longtime viewers of our council meetings via the PEG channel, the public, public channel. And we're also enhancing the capabilities on the digital side by allowing live streaming to other platforms like YouTube and Facebook. So I'm going to wholeheartedly recommend that we, we go with tier three. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Emilio?
Thank you, Mayor. So when we talk about tier three, Chief Information Officer, we're talking about the premium plan, correct, on that?
Yeah, it is renamed as a premium plan in the current year's pricing proposal from AMP.
Thank you. I wholeheartedly agree with many of the comments made from, from the public that for the best for Pacific Grove, I believe the premium plan is the plan to go. And I'm a proponent of that.
Councilmember Paduri?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for me. A lot of good information already, and I'm in support of the premium plan, too. But my question to Mr. Kasimi, how, how long does it take for AMP to actually publish the video recordings? Because the note that came in today was that the recording was delayed. So is it provided in the contract or otherwise that they have to publish these recordings by a certain time period?
Yes, Councilmember Paduri through the mayor. We, the terms in the contract does have the timeframe of two days, within two days, that AMP will provide us with the recording of the meeting. However, for last week's recording, there was some confusion that AMP was under the impression that they would wait until the continuity. the continuation meeting is concluded, and they would put the two meetings together in the single recording.
So this was just a follow up on that. So this was just a one off kind of case where there was a confusion.
This i- i- in a way for for this one, yes, it was one off, but there has been instances of some delays longer than two days. And then we are working with AMP on those, on making sure that, you know, it doesn't happen too often.
And with this premium option now and the ability for us to broadcast into a platform of our choice, et cetera. Is that? Is that going to be in real time? Or is that still two days? I mean, if if we broadcast YouTube, for example, it's going to be there automatically, right?
Yes, once the we screen to a different social networking platform. Then we do, we will have an option to have that recording be available on that platform soon after the meeting ends.
All right, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Add my support for everything I've heard from the public and my colleagues. And to state that I hope in the future that our, my expectation is that AMP. Would have the recordings within 24 hours with. Next to no exceptions, meeting past the week. Is not something that. We should have, period. So. Do we need a motion on this?
Councilmember Smith.
Can Councilmember Mario, can you turn your mute? We're getting the feedback again. I would move. Move that we approve an amendment to the AMP contract. On, under the tier three paradigm. I think that's good.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion, I actually have just one comment that I I took a look back to our budget discussions. And there's, under the city council. Budget, we have contract services, consultants and miscellaneous. Add them together at $60,000. So if we need some money. To provide excellent. Broadcast services, there's a place to take it from, in my opinion, right? May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaddie?
Aye.
Councilmembers Pedory?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Mayor Prochem Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries six. 01, Councilmember Tomlinson absent.
We'll now move forward with the former item 6A, Council Policy 002 Meeting and Travel Expense Reimbursement. Is. Okay. Folks, that was just a siren going by council chambers. Okay. Ms. Hannah, are you taking this item?
Yes, Mayor. Ms. Pope is not available. Good evening. Count, Mayor, Council and Members of the Public. The item that we have was on consent, and so I don't have a presentation for you this evening. At the December 1st council meeting, staff recommended some revisions to the travel policy, which included changing the meal per diem amount to the GSA General Services Administration rates. And providing additional criteria for lodging costs and defining the method for calculating distance. When that item was brought forward, council had made some suggested changes, including. Providing information for council travel in the budget process, which we did at this last budget session. And the city manager, city manager reviews and approves the city travel expense reimbursees for payment. The actual approval of the travel is done through the process of the council approval of the budget. But for administration purposes, there would be a sign off. Or to say that there is sufficient funds in the budget remaining and that all of the documentation would be appropriate for payment. So that's something that we would look for from a budgetary standpoint. And laying what you write an opportunity for the council members who sit on a board. If they are receiving a stipend, that there is an exception that if there was something that would be beneficial, that they would go through the regular travel request process to be able for the city to fund that travel. And the attached draft policy was reviewed with the city's auditors. And that concludes my presentation.
Do we have any public comment?
No hands raised yet online.
All right, a closed public comment, council discussion on this item. I'm the one that pulled it. So I've got, first of all, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I think by and large, many of the amendments to this policy are excellent. And I'm glad that the prior council comments were woven in to this amendment. So thank you very much. But I have four small changes to make. And if I could ask the city clerk to put up. The agenda packet, page 26, we'll just go through each of those four. Pretty small items, but I think it's worthwhile.
Okay, and. The page was 26?
Yes, page, page 26, the the bottom, if you could. Yeah, make it larger, great, and just scroll to the bottom. That'd be great. Okay, so the first one is the very last row in the table. Where it says approval to travel, says consistent with budget approval and policy. Well, just so folks understand, council does not approve or did not approve a specific. A travel line that's. I'll I'll say. Contained within a larger item. So. Council doesn't look at each of the individual items. So it would not be transparent at all to know if a particular travel expense was consistent with budget approval. So what I'm going to suggest is, and plus, I think it needs to. Approval needs to be identified as a person. And so I'm suggesting we change that to city manager and mayor. Or council. And. I would just leave it with city manager, but then there's a conflict of interest. So that's why I added mayor. And if a council member felt, if it wasn't approved and a council member. Wanted to go to council. Obviously, council can can weigh in and and approve it. So that's my first recommendation. It's city manager and mayor or council for that particular item. I'll go through the the other three quickly. They're small. Next page, the top of page 27, please. Okay, and this one, the, again, the line in the top. Approval consistent with budget approval and policy, same issue, as I, as I mentioned before. I suggest we change that to department director. Because if any. Board, committee or commission member was going on travel, I don't expect it's very much. It comes out of some department's budget. For example, the BNRC, just to pick on them, it would come out of the public works. So. So that's my second change. Approval by department director. And now page 28. The top of page 28. Please. There's a little box. This is one of 250. Can you?
It's not letting me get there, Your Honor, because the screen sharing is covering it. So let me page down as quickly as I can.
How about the scroll bar on the right hand side?
I might be able to get it. This way. I think it was under. Resolutions, wasn't it? Here's the travel. Okay, so. And what page again? I'm sorry?
28.
Got it.
All right, B, B1. And I suggest we delete the third and the fourth sentence because. They're not necessary and it's confusing. The the second sentence actually says it all. I'll I'll read the second sentence. This salary is intended to reimburse council member incurred expenses for telephone and meeting expenses from travel and meetings in Monterey County. So the next sentence and the last sentence. The confusing part is the last sentence, council members may claim mileage reimbursement for all travel on city business. Well, it just said not within Monterey County. And just to, just to remind the the public that most, if not all, regional boards. That committee members, that council members sit on, have a stipend, have a meeting stipend. That they can avail themselves of in addition. So that's my third. And my last one is B5. If you could just scroll down to B5. Okay, B5, I'll read it. Council member travel that was not included in the budget must be approved on consent at a city council meeting. Prior to the travel. Let's just delete that. Council doesn't, as I mentioned, council doesn't approve a travel budget. It's contained in the council assigned department. It's just. It's just not even necessary. Anyhow, those, those are my four things. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Smith?
Yes. I I think that this, I'm going to ask Ms. Hannah if the, this does cover for advancements rather than reimbursements, this policy that's currently before us?
Councilmember Smith through the mayor, yes, it does cover the ability to do advancements as well.
Okay, thank you. And then. I'm with the mayor as far as some of the suggestions, except. The the reimbursement for mileage, I didn't really see that anywhere else, and I do think. It should be included. If, especially if we're driving to Sacramento for the. For the. Annual conference, it's quite a drive with gas prices being what they are now. I think it's worth reimbursing our council members now and later. But because that last sentence that. I get, there's a third sentence in on page 28, I think it was. The third sentence, I, that was duplicative and kind of like redundant, but then the fourth sentence. Yeah, there we go, B1, 3B1. So it reads, in consideration of numerous expenses. Blah, 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 the salary is intended to reimburse council member incurred expenses for telephone and meeting expenses from travel. And meetings in Monterey County. Council members may, and then I skipped that sentence that I agree is duplicative. And then it says council members may claim mileage reimbursement for all travel on city business. I'm not sure. It seems like that would be applicable to travel to the conference.
Councilmember Smith through the mayor, because we've clarified what is travel is reimbursable in other sections. I believe we could eliminate that sentence. Just looking at it, that was inherited language from the other policy that wasn't changed, but now that we've added some additional clarifications. It would qualify council members for reimbursement for for travel that is not within the defined area that's covered by stipend.
Okay, so the it's wouldn't, you couldn't take mileage. If we approve this, we won't be able to reimburse mileage for our trips to Monterey, for me, Monterey One Water, which I never have tried to do that, but. And and for others, maybe out to Hambag or something like that. Those would not be reimbursable.
I would, I would believe the way council member Smith through the mayor, I believe the way that it reads is that. Or travel within that defined area, if it is, if it is, I would say, local, that it would not be reimbursable. It would be covered by stipend.
It's covered by section two. Is that what you're saying, Your Honor? The next section down?
It's our, our existing policy has has always been that travel, like personal car use, is not reimbursable within Monterey County.
Okay.
But if, you know, if we went to League of California Cities meeting and in Watsonville, for example, or. In Sacramento, for example, absolutely, that's covered, but it's within Monterey County. No.
Okay, well, I'm fine with the the amendments.
Councilmember Cluddy.
I guess I've got a question following up on Councilmember Smith's question and comments about traveling outside of Monterey County. I've never submitted any kind of travel request or anything like that. So can you briefly describe how one would go about? Making that request for, for instance, to attend the League of California Cities Conference or whatnot? Does the city have and does do council, council members have to submit? A, excuse me, a travel authorization request?
There is a, a council, there is a standard form that the city has that's an advance and reimbursement form. And I believe the city clerk has worked with council members in the past, and there would be an estimate for the amount of travel. And we could advance, or if there is an advance, and depending on what costs they are. If it's an overage and it's acceptable travel, then there could be an additional reimbursement for it, but per diem would be standard. And the mileage, you would enter the amount of mileage that you plan to go to and from the conference. Or use perhaps a, like a Google Map report to say how many miles it is to the location, and that would be attached to the report or the request.
Okay, thank you. So is that advanced reimbursement form or the, the, any language pertaining to it included within this policy for its update? Or do we need to even worry about that?
I I do believe we, we may. I'd like to say, under the procedure, we talk about the form. Yes, all travel expense forms.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm looking at one or IC. It says for approval, it's in red, for reimbursement slash advances. So it is covered there. What is, Ms. Hannah, did you find another place?
What's, what section, Your Honor?
Under the the very first page of the policy, page 26 in the packet. Under the heading policy, A, B, C, get to C.
Okay.
And that first line says approval. And that first line says approval for reimbursement slash advancements. So I, I think it's covered. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Peduri?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to chime in on the reimbursement for mileage. Monterey County is pretty wide. I mean, if I want to go to Kings City and back, it's a hundred, hundred plus miles. So I, I don't, I do want us to still be able to reimburse for, for travel within Monterey County. Perhaps we can add a, add some clauses in there to say reimburse mileage for miles above twenty five or fifty, as the case may be, something to that effect. But I don't want to strike that sentence completely.
Okay, I'm, I want to add that the changes that I was proposing don't infect, don't impact the policy, the current policy that we have today or what has been amended. I was just, the changes were just clarification and hopefully making it a little bit easier to understand. So if it's not clear, then we need to, we need to look at it further. We need to talk further. So that would be a change in current policy. And we'll need to, to change the policy and a motion on that if we were to move forward on reimbursing a mileage within Monterey County. Councilmember Emilio?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question for Tori. Now, there, there was a conference, oh, I want to say maybe last September or October, it was League of California Cities, and I had signed up late. So I had to use a credit card for the hotel, et cetera. And so, under those circumstances, where suddenly you're, you're late signing up, but you didn't get approval, but you use your credit card, but I did get reimbursed. And that would be, that would be okay so long as I had documentation showing that. Is that correct, Ms. Hannah?
If you had, Councilmember Emilio through the mayor, if you have been on a, on a per city travel and you registered late and you had to use your own credit card, yes, we would reimburse for that amount. We would just want to get the, the receipts to ensure that we're reimbursing the appropriate dollar amount.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't, I'll, I'll just have to ask the mayor here. So if that circumstances comes up again for myself or one of the other council people, just what Mrs. Hannah said is, would be doable. Am I correct on that, Mayor?
Well, if, if I understand the question, there's one situation where, say, you go to, or a council member goes to a League of California Cities convention, say, charges everything on their own expense, comes, comes back home and then submits the paperwork to get reimbursed. Well, there's not always a hundred percent guarantee that that would be approved for reimbursement. But the alternative would be your council members ready to go to a, say, League of California's conference and, you know, two days before they submit the request for approval for expenses, estimated expenses, and, and it's approved, then, and then it should be no problem getting, getting that money reimbursed after the trip using your own credit card.
Okay, just on the clarification on this, I just wanted to make sure I don't have to bring it back to the council to get reimbursed that were expenses for any council member that goes to League of California Cities. Am I correct on that, Mayor?
Right, right. That's what I'm suggesting. Just submit the form that would be, council member would submit the form that would be routed to the city manager and the mayor. And I suppose if the mayor had expenses, it should be added to the mayor pro tem. To cover all expenses.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
So I have four amendments proposed. Do I have any support for that? I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move approval of the, of tonight's recommended policy with the additions that the mayor has suggested tonight. I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmembers Peduri?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero, one. Councilmember Tomlinson absent.
Thank you. We're now on to item thirteen B, amend the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three authorized position allocation. Ms. Hannah, are you handling this? Or I see Ms. Livia is with us. Welcome.
Thank you. And now go ahead and move forward with presenting this item. So good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. Through the budget process, council approves headcount for regular positions for all the departments. Usually this is referred to the FTE or full time equivalency. The community and development department has two vacant half time positions right now, both administrative in nature. Staff is recommending combining the two half time positions into one time, one full time equivalent position. This is headcount neutral, so we're not adding to the headcount. However, once the position becomes benefits eligible, it does increase the amount to the general fund. And so this increase is annually $6,800, an increase to the general fund, but through salary savings from the vacant positions and through supplemental grants, this can be covered. Yeah, so if I want to bring it back to council discussion.
Do we have any public comment?
I do not see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comment, council discussion on the item?
Maybe I make a motion?
Please.
I move we do, move, we do the recommended action.
Second.
Second.
We have, we have a vote, please.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
Peduri?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero, one. Councilmember Tomlinson absent.
That brings us to the end of the agenda. Thanks to the public for being here and, and watching and participating. Thanks to staff and my colleagues. Meeting adjourned. Have a pleasant evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.